Thank you. So, we're gonna have a presentation?
There is no presentation there.
Okay, alright. So, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on the BSI Underground Utility Assessment, now would be the time. Please take this podium to my right. State your name. You have three minutes. Anybody like to speak on this?
I'm surprised.
Public hearing, BSI Undergrounding.
Well, this is the easy one.
This is somewhat easy.
Somewhat easy, yeah.
I guess, no one's getting up. I'll have to move to close public hearing.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
I would like, Mayor, I'd like to move approval. I'd like to make a comment that, based on all of the issues relative to conflict of interest, not conflict of interest, it's the...
Potential voting conflict?
Yeah, the ethics issues, those kinds of things. I do not own, I live in Burnstour Isles. I do not own investment property in Burnstour Isles. So, based on the fact that it's just my domicile, and I don't feel that there's a conflict of interest here. So, I would like to, and based on the fact that the residents did move to have us go forward with this, and the city's already expended the money, I would move approval.
So, we have a motion, a second, for approval. And we all have had the written objections in our packet that we have reviewed.
And I've responded to these residents and explained to them what the process has been. The comments that have been, come back to me, have been really encouraging us to have many more public meetings about the process once the Florida Power and Light results are in, and that, you know, a vote, a further vote be during season and those kinds of things. So, there's a lot of valuable information and dialogue that residents, for the most part, understand. And it's been a long delay. So, I think that has also been part of the issue of, it was approved two years ago. And, but there was a significant amount of negotiation on the part of our city manager and the Burnstour Isles Canal, or Canal Advisor, the Underground Wiring Committee with Florida Power and Light to get them to do the project for what they said that they're going to do it for. And that took quite some time, because they tried to get a lot more out of us. And so, I commend Howard and the committee for really their tenacity in getting it to this point, so.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have a word of agreement to Avant Construction of Pontagorda, Florida, for the construction of the Gilchrist Park Playground restroom.
Again, we got the, it's the lowest response of bidder. And we'd like to get started on it. It's coming from sales tax and impact fees.
Clearly, this exceeded our budget for this restroom, but it's been a long time coming, and I just don't think we can squeeze any more out of it. I mean, we have to get it under construction.
There are some options we need to show you then.
Okay. Yes, Lynn?
I had an opportunity to speak with Kelly from the mural society. And she told me that the playground, the Friends of the Playground, have expressed interest in having a mural put on the side of the bathroom facility, which will require it to have stucco siding, rather than siding on the sides.
Okay.
So, that may be one of the things we should take into consideration when we vote on this.
Okay.
Go ahead. Oh, you're setting it up.
Good morning. Marion Pace, procurement manager, for the record. Procurement solicited bids for the construction of the Playground restroom. In the base bid was included the base options, which would be the, the standing seam is in the base option. There is an optional deduct for the 5V crimp, as seen in the presentation prepared by Urban Design. The metal roof material, as far as the standing seam, it does match the existing new pavilions out at the park. They have concealed fasteners, which affords for no maintenance. The cost is a little bit higher, but it does have the lower maintenance. The optional 5V crimp matches the nearby residential roofs. It does have the exposed fasteners, which will require maintenance to replace them every 20 years. That's a little bit lower, which that's the option, the deduct. But it will have the higher maintenance cost. On option two, the cement board lap siding is included in the base bid. There is an optional deduct for stucco siding. And the cement board lap siding is similar to many of the residents. Still does require painting for maintenance, and it's a little higher cost initially. And it's equivalent maintenance down the road as far as painting and maintaining it, as the stucco siding. The stucco siding does not match the, some of the residents nearby, and it still has the same maintenance, but it is a lower initial cost. So, that would be the deduct option. Oh, Joan said we could stucco just one side for a mural.
Do we know exactly where they want the mural? We have an idea, don't we? Yes, we do.
And we would process that as a change order. Discuss it with Avant, who's out in the audience today, as far as just doing maybe one wall. Staff's recommendation is to stay with the standing seam roofing that's in the base bid, and also the cement board lap siding that is in the base bid, instead of accepting the optional deducts.
Well, the roof, I think, is, less maintenance is...
Is a good thing.
...the way to go. And it's gonna match what we already have over there. So, I would be in favor of keeping the higher quality roof. As far as the lap board, if we can, if we can make sure that the mural, the Friends of the Gilchrist Park are okay with having just their area stuccoed for their mural, I would be fine with that.
Which wall would the mural be on, and where we would be facing?
It's gonna be in the playground side.
In the playground side itself?
Playground side. Playground side, correct. So, is everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
So, we're not taking the deducts?
Okay. In the agreement, when you execute the agreement, Mayor, there is a page that has, for the agreement pricing, no options selected. So, if you can initial that, along with signing the agreement.
Okay. Alright, so we need an approval of the award.
Motion for approval.
Yes.
I'll second, but do we need to have it in there that there's...
We didn't take the options?
No, that we are keeping one area stucco for the mural. Does that need to be a part of the motion?
I think we should.
You want me, we could even write it on the award, okay?
Yeah.
So, is that part of your motion?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, then I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the award with the, without the options, and with the wall for the mural. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have a word of agreement to JRL Underground Utilities for Drainage Improvements and Swale Grading.
Marion Pace, procurement manager, again. This is for the drainage and re-swale, or re-grading the swales. We went out for bid, we received three bids. One bid was not accepted, because they were in default of the past contract. So, we included their pricing in the evaluation only for informational purposes only. JRL Underground was deemed the lowest response of responsible bidder. We have checked their references, and they received very good references. I've also spoke with Jean, who's the owner, and advised them they will hit the ground running. And we are having a kickoff meeting tomorrow afternoon to get them going, and with their scopes of work.
Lynn?
Do we have anything in the contract that puts them on the spot in case they decide to walk off the job like the last contractor did?
It's really kind of hard to do liquidated damages in this type of contract. So, it basically, it would just be a default clause, and they would not be able to submit a bid to the city again.
So, we can't put any kind of a default penalty in there?
We could maybe see about negotiating some sort of deficiency credits for if they have any deficiencies, if they don't complete a work, complete a schedule or what have you, and make a monetary automatic deduct, which we do have in some of our performance contracts. We can discuss that with them.
I'd like to see something like that put into the contract.
Could we do, discuss it in an amendment? Or not award the...
Anybody else think?
I don't think we should be doing this at all. They're very consistent.
I know you, I know you.
This is coming out of the general fund that has a substandard reserve. I just wanted to be clear that I'm not gonna stand in the way of this, obviously. But I think this is something that should be falling on the actual property owners whose swales we're repairing. And I'm very clear about that. I think that this is not a, this is a slippery slope we're going down. We're trying to give all of our constituents everything they want, without being able to ask them for the funding. If we were to, in our budget, put a line item to specifically fund this by increasing the mileage rate, by whatever, then I would also still go along with it reluctantly, because I still think we should be responsible individuals for our own property and maintain our properties appropriately according to code. And that's just the way I feel about it. I haven't changed.
Then we shouldn't be approving this.
You can. You know, there's four other people up here.
How long is this contract good for?
A three-year initial with a three-year renewal.
I mean, would you wanna limit the term? We had two bidders, and this one was much lower than the second. The third was rejected, so. I mean, we really need, if we have the program in place, much to your chagrin. It's in place, and we need to, I mean, the people that we've served are much happier with their drainage than they were in the past.
That's a good deal.
I, you know, there are, if you read next door, I mean, there are people that are arguing now that we should be changing and paying for the driveways with swales in them. And we should be paying to redo their driveways. Which is, that's crazy. We don't redo driveways. The driveways are individual property owners' decisions. And so, we've kind of given this, I have to agree with Gary that we have given everybody this indication that we're gonna solve everything, and that's not what this is for. We are, we're using this money to take care of the grass in the swales, and not their driveways. But I think we've discussed this so many times.
Yeah, we...
I totally agree with Gary. However, the other side of it is, we have so educated everybody that this is the way we're going to do things, that for us to just turn around and, it's just...
And we've started the program already, so.
We have.
We're kind of into it at this point.
And people know where they're at on the list.
The other issue that really arises with this is that, you know, are we going to get into that now, having public works go around and site people for, you're the person who's causing the drainage issue. When people are maintaining their homes, they feel like they have a lovely lawn, and yet they're the ones who have the thatch in the lawn that's causing the problem. And so, then we have to come up with a whole nother program. So, it's, and we've discussed this before, and we've been down this route, road, so.
Just point of information. My block drains very well. I have a neighbor across the street, they put in new sod. The contractor they did, did not properly adjust the swale. The city made them pull up the sod and redo the swale on a new addition. So, I have a neighbor that forego that cost, or their contractor, in this case, did that cost based on what city code is. So, we're being selective in who we're enforcing the code on. It's not being equitably enforced across the board on all of our constituents, our citizens and property owners. That's my comment.
Thank you. So, what would you like to do with this contract? Do we wanna approve it? Do we wanna change it? Do we want an amendment? I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward.
And just to address your question, Mayor, on the term of the contract, we do have a termination for convenience. We do have the right to cancel the contract in any year, should we choose not to move forward with it, or decide to go back out.
Decide to go in a different direction.
Then I would, I would move approval at this time.
I would agree with that, second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the contract. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one.
Mayor, may we go back to the Avant Construction contract for just further clarification? I found the provision in the contract where you wanted the mayor to initial the no options selected. But we did say that we were going to require just one of the walls to be stuccoed. How do you want that to be addressed?
If we may, address it at a staff level, and go into, just go into immediate negotiations with Avant to give us a change order for just stuccoing that one wall.
Can we get Avant's representative to state that they will agree to a reduction in the price based on what the change order would be?
You gotta come to the podium, please.
My name is Finae Mathis, from Avant Construction. Yes, we will do a revision, and we'll replace the siding part of that section for stucco.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so we are good on both of those awards. Now, we have appropriation, yes?
Just so that the record's clear, ma'am. And that will result in a reduction in the cost as negotiated. She stated correct for the record.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Next, we have appropriation of funds for the reconfiguration of Lashley Park Parking.
And that's, this is the contract to award, so we can get, moving on, on this project, we talked about it under CRA.
Any questions or comments?
I'd move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the appropriation for the Lashley Park Parking. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have appropriation of funds for Harbor Walk West Area 1 enhancements. Lynn, do you have anybody here for the gas pump? Did anybody come? Okay.
So, Kristen Simeone, interim finance director. I'm just gonna speak towards the appropriation part, but we have additional revenue coming into our 1% sales tax. So, we're gonna appropriate the additional revenue, and then also appropriate the expenditure of the $50,000. And any questions on the project? Joan is here.
Any questions on the project? Yes.
I can understand the placement of most of the trees. I was wondering why there would be three of the oaks right down the middle of the park, in a row like that? I just, I'm sure, as an arborist, you've got a great explanation, I just...
For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Manager. Mitchell and I, when we were walking the site, there were trees originally planted throughout the center of the event area, and it provided shade for everybody who was there. But the way that they were placed, you could not see the view shed from the outside of the area. So, we, in turn, placed those trees outside of the line of sight for the view shed of that roadway. They can be moved to other areas, but it does provide some shade for people who are gonna be there. They're far enough apart that it will allow the flow of the event to maintain, gives the people the shade. And that was one of the tasks, we were tasked with when we put this together.
Thank you. You have a great explanation. So, this will make sure that no one gets to park on the grass ever, right?
We're trying.
I actually got asked that question, believe it or not.
So, do we have a motion to approve the appropriation?
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the appropriation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, we're gonna, if you're so inclined, I would like to take the three items under new business, since we have some business owners here who are here to hear those items, and then come back to the utilities capital improvement update. Would that be okay with everybody? Okay, so now we're moving into new business, the first of which is TU 02-18. Temporary use permit.
This is a urban design. We're doing the IKEA style.
She knows. She's getting her technology in place.
Good morning. Lisa Hannan, zoning official. Staff has received a request for a security boundary fence for the IKEA style property. We have received correspondence from their environmentalist that has contacted FWC that there is not a permit necessary regarding the clearing, to make sure it's minimal. And as long as the fence and associated clearing will not impact the nest and the work is done when the eagles are done nesting for the 17-18 season, which nesting season has been completed at this time. And I believe it is at the end of May. May 15th is usually the ending of nesting season. So, staff recommends approval. It's a six-foot vinyl coated chain link fence. A fence, an actual fence permit through the building department will be required prior to construction. And any type of electrically charged or barbed wire fences specifically prohibited. But there were some police reports that were included in the application documents. So, they've had a lot of trespassing and some theft of their security cameras.
And the applicant is here. Does anybody have any questions, or Lynn?
I just have a comment. The Federal Eagle Protection Act states that you have to be 660 feet away from the eagle's nest in order to do any kind of construction activity. And there is absolutely no way that this fence is gonna be that far away, on the front side.
Correct. And when they, I do have an email that their environmentalist sent to the migratory bird permit office in Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia. And her response was, "So long as the fence and associated clearing will not impact the nest and the work is done when the eagles are done nesting for the 17-18 season, it is fine to move forward without a permit. Regarding the clearing, please make sure it is minimal and the nest tree doesn't become susceptible to wind damage."
Okay, well, the eagles are still in the nest. I've seen them personally, and I have photos of them. And there are several other people who are sending me photos on a regular basis. And my concern is that the Eagle Protection Act does state very clearly that any activity that takes place within less than 660 feet from the nest that would in any way disrupt the eagles in that nest, whether it's construction, whether it's noise, whether it's traffic, anything that disrupts that nest is not legally allowed. So, I do have a very big concern about this.
Yes, if I may respond, good morning.
Say your name, please.
Yes, Daniel Diaz-Balart. I'm a lawyer, and I represent the property owner. Good morning to you all. Counsel, Woman Matthews, I understand your concern. And just to kind of touch on what Ms. Hannan already mentioned, we did reach out to Ogwanda Kirkpatrick, who's with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Migratory Bird Division. And she is the authority, frankly, on these matters and eagles issues in our area. And we informed them of our desire to put up this temporary nest. And we informed her...
Fence.
Yeah, sorry. Temporary fence, exactly. And we informed her specifically that the fence will be within 330 feet and as close as 100 feet to this nest. And she responded that a specific permit from their office is not required, that we are allowed to put up this fence as long as we take these precautions, which she suggested, which we are most certainly doing. We're not impacting the nest in any way. And it be done after the nesting season, which ended in May. So, we understand your concerns, and we're gonna do everything in our power along with the company that's gonna put up the fence to make sure that the nest is not disturbed at all. But this, in fact, was cleared with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, and they did approve of the temporary fence.
Well, respectfully, I have to disagree, because I've seen the eagles, they're still in the nest, and they're still actively in the nest. So, I think we have to disagree on this one.
And I think just from the police reports that we've, they're already being disrupted by people dumping and people going in there that should not be allowed. So, putting up the fence will actually prevent some more disruption, I believe, because they clearly have had dumping, and they clearly had theft. And if people, you know, wanna go in there right now, they can. So, I think for security, it would be a good idea to protect the property and to protect the birds.
I was just gonna ask the question for clarity, that the purpose of this fence would also prevent extraneous interruption to the eagles because of incursion. I'd also just like to share with you, during my college years, I did assist in a field study of raptor birds. They weren't bald eagles, they were red-tailed hawks, but they're very close relatives. A couple of things about them is, is when we would go into the field to study them, we would build a blind, basically, in a neighboring tree. The good news is, they can't count. The bad news is, is when we would, as we would walk in to do our food study, they would be disrupted, they would leave the nest, they'd circus, they would be rather upset. But as soon as we left, we would leave one of us behind in the blind, and then they were just fine, because they can't count. So, the point being is, is that, yes, during the daytime, during construction of the fence, the raptors are gonna be annoyed, okay? But as soon as those individuals leave, they'll settle in and calm down. That's just the natural behavior of these types of birds. And if that reduces the amount of continual disruption of them on an intermittent basis, because of people that may not have the best things in mind to do, by keeping them, I think this is probably in the greater good for the eagles themselves, as well as maintaining the security of the property, just from my perspective. Irregardless of whatever development is gonna go on there in the future, the way it sits right now to protect the eagles, I think it's to the eagles' benefit to put a security fence up.
Any other comments or questions? So, we need a motion?
Motion for approval.
I second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the temporary use permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Okay, next we have Smugglers Event Management, Fourth of July Festival Park Fee Waiver Request, which I received a letter from Mr. Cleffy, because last year we did give him a fee waiver, because he, with the fireworks show that he does put on at the park, he needs almost a whole week, I believe, to reserve the park and to get everything secure for the fantastic fireworks show that the city does not pay for, that the private entity pays for. And so, last year, we had given him a fee waiver, but it was only for one year. So, hoping that we can have it for some period of time, or whatever your pleasure is, as far as what kind of, if you wanna hear it every year, if you, if you wanna, you know... What would staff recommendation be, Lisa?
For council consideration, of course. But the request was for the next five years. They have put on the fireworks show for several years. With the setup cleanup and the actual event times, the park rental fees are, with the damage deposit, is approximately $2,000. We do still collect the damage deposit, which is refundable if there's no damage or additional cleanup by city staff.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Just a question. Is there any way that we can draft an agreement with Smugglers about this? If this is approved, that, there's nothing that says that they will sponsor the event if we approve this for five years. So, my question is, if we approve it, how are we guaranteed that Smugglers will actually be the company that does the fireworks display for us? And do we wanna make a five-year commitment, not knowing that? I mean, 'cause, you know, somebody from, let's just say, Sunseeker or some other company comes in and decides that they would like to take over the project.
Yeah, I would recommend that we make a motion that it's only for Smugglers events, and that that would take care of it. It's not for any other entity.
That would work.
Okay, that covers it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Would that be okay? Okay. So, we need a motion?
Motion for approval.
To include, okay, so what is your?
To include Smugglers only.
For the next five years, Smugglers Event Management to have a park waiver for the Fourth of July Festival.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, just so that the record's clear, that doesn't mean that if somebody else comes in and wants to do this and Smugglers doesn't want to do it, that Smugglers has the opportunity to prevent somebody else from coming in.
Right.
But this waiver is for the benefit of Smugglers, as long as the Smugglers is the one that's going to be sponsoring the, the event.
Okay. All right, next, we have discussion of gas pump security measures related to card skimmers. You going to take it?
Chief Davis, are you going to speak to this?
I, I can talk about, if you guys have questions, I'm, I'm here, but I don't know if you want to start and I can chime in.
I asked for this to be brought up because we've had our first instance of a gas pump skimmer on May 3rd at the mobile station at Burnt Store Road and 41. And I've been watching this gas skimmer problem occurring in all different surrounding neighborhoods in the community. And Cape Coral has gone so far as to enact an ordinance that protects the people in the city and the visitors to the city, that every gas pump must have a locking device on it, or the, the owner of the gas station can actually put a device in each pump that shuts the pump down when an illegal activity is, is determined to be taking place in the pump. So I just thought that as a proactive measure, that we should consider putting an ordinance in place that governs the city gas stations, that gives us something to enforce if there's a problem. I would hope that we never have another instance, but there was another one in Port Charlotte again yesterday. So, it's, it's a very real problem. We have a lot of folks who are getting their credit compromised and I'm, and I have a big concern for the safety of the people that live here and the visitors to our city. So I think it, it's time to have the conversation.
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to add to the conversation. I think there's some issues as far as enforcement, et cetera, goes. However, as I'd had a short conversation with Chief Davis and some other individuals, we probably have already been victims and don't know about it. Okay? And also in, in talking with, about this gas stations, it can be a little bit more encompassing because these things are even available for the little portable skimmers that you'll see when you go to the tiki hut. You know, those things can, those types of devices can also be compromised. So there's, there's, it's, it's a sign of the time of, of the technology and what's going on. I think that, I agree with, I agree with, with you, Lynn, that we should be proactive. I think that the conversation needs to be a continual conversation beyond what today, from time to time, to see how we can address these problems for our citizens in the future. So, I just wanted to make those comments that it's not going to be, we can pass this resolution, we can, we can do that, but it's still going to be difficult to enforce because it's not going to be just the gas stations, ATM machines, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that we're all clear on that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chief Pam Davis with the Punt de Gorda Police Department. I actually brought in a picture of the one that we found in the early part of May. So if you can kind of tell, that's the pump opened up and the skimmer is on the inside. So a lot of questions I get is, how do I, how can I tell that there's a skimmer on these gas station pumps? And 95% of the time, you can't, because they're on the inside. So, having that, and these gas pumps generally have kind of a universal key, which is how these people can get into them. So having them have a unique key for each gas station is, is, A, a good deterrent. And if they go even further and make the pump able to malfunction, if anybody opens that, that's even better. But Cape Coral, so far, it's very early, so they haven't been able to really tell their success rate. I do know that at one time last year, it was 11 and they only had nine so far this year. I have a feeling that the fact that they have this ordinance is probably pushing the criminals up this way. So, which is why we had, which is why we had one May 4th. So it's, it's not a bad idea to kind of be talking about this and whether the enforcement issue, yeah, that, it would have to be spot checks all the time, going out to make sure that, that this is there. Right now, they, Department of Agriculture requires the blue security tape on the pumps. And if it's broken, so, just so you guys know, as citizens, if it's broken, call the Department of Agriculture and say, hey, this pump's blue tape's not on here. But, you know, it's, it's, again, it's getting people out there to be able to enforce it.
So basically with Cape Coral, they're, they, they, it's an extra locking device on the out, outside?
There's three, three choices for these business owners. You can put the different locking device so that it's, the key is unique just to that gas station. Or you can put a system in place that if that thing's open without, if the pump's open without, I guess, a code, a code that's unique, it'll shut down the whole pump, so that nobody can use it. And then the third one is to put an encryption device that encrypts all of our credit card information when we use the pump. So there's three options that a business owner can use.
Nancy, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just, a couple of things. One is, what, where is the, if you can point out in this picture what we're looking at? What, which, where is the, the skimmer?
Right here, and I have, I have another picture of it just by itself.
You know, I understand what Gary's talking about. I know someone who's a flight attendant who just.
By itself there. And it just plugs into their circuit board.
Somebody who's a flight attendant and they were walking, you know, whose credit card information got picked up just on the plane by somebody. So, you know, it's, it's, it is the time that we're living in. And talking with Commissioner Toseo, who's actually proactively put locks on all of his, and the one that happened there was that somebody forgot to shut lock, somebody forgot to lock it. And that quickly, somebody put a skimmer in. So, and then I stopped at the new Wawa to look and see where, if I could see where the tape was. There, I couldn't detect any tape, but there's locks. Their pumps have locks, and that's, in looking at, in preparing for this and looking at what is the industry going toward, the industry is encouraging locking pumps. And the state statute doesn't address that. So the state is yet to, to get, go this far. But I think that the petroleum dispensing industry is, that's where they're headed with this, so.
And you would think the business would want that, because then they advertise, hey, I have safer pumps than, you know.
Yeah, yeah, so, I think it's, I know that the county has not talked about this issue. And as we annex and we bring in more, that can, we could bring in some particular, potentially a gas station that has not yet addressed this, but I would think that owners would want to secure their, their pumps, so.
Gary?
Just two items I'd like to add. One is, whatever we probably propose for security measures today that we would like to see will have an obsolescence, six months to a couple of years, highly likely, because of how quickly things change. But with that said, I just have a question. How burdensome is the cost of altering these to the actual vendor themselves?
And I don't have, I don't have the answer for that.
There, there's the balancing act, too. You also don't want to put a burdensome cost.
Right.
I mean, if, when you, I think, I think changing a lock on a pump is probably not so burdensome. But if you're asking to do a $10,000 modify, I'm just taking the, you know how I do with my numbers, everybody. But if it costs $10,000 a pump to modify them, to secure them, that's probably not realistic either.
I think once you get into the other security measures, yes, you're going to pay more, but it's probably a couple hundred bucks a pump to do the keys.
To do the locks?
To do the locks, I mean, yes.
Because obviously an encryption device sounds much more expensive than a lock and a key.
Yeah, probably does.
The, the, the fine is a little steep here, too, $250 per pump. I mean, like, in the, in the instance that you said, you know, if it did happen that way and it was human error and they did, you know, have the key, the locks changed and all that, I would hope that we wouldn't, yes. We would hope that, I mean, if we could get some voluntary, I don't know that we, do we need an ordinance, or is there any way to do some voluntary outreach?
We, we will. We'll definitely go out and talk to the gas stations and whether they'll do it or not.
Right.
Because I, I think, you know, they're managed by different people than the owners and the managers come and go, so.
I, I can speak to personally having been affected by this problem. I, I had my car skimmed at a gas station in Port Charlotte a few years ago. And within 10 minutes, they had already spent $15,000. So it is a real problem. It is a real problem. And we, I think we need to do something that, that can be enforceable by the police department, and that's just my opinion about it.
I agree. I'm just saying, anything we do is not going to solve the problem, it's going to temper it. And we should, and I agree with you. We should do what we can to temper it for our citizens and visitors, et cetera.
So what do you want to do with the item? Do you want to bring forth a similar ordinance?
Yes, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Want us to bring forth an ordinance? We can. Okay.
Sounds like the police need some kind of enforcement mechanism to make it happen.
Maybe we could put a caveat that individuals convicted would be required to repair swales in the city or something.
You're so bad. You're so bad.
Okay, so we finished new business. Now we're going back to, under budget, the letter F. Fiscal year 19 to '23 Utilities Capital Improvement Program and fiscal year 19 Utilities Operation Fund Budget Status Update.
This is going to take a while. Can we break for a minute?
We could take it. Does everybody want a little break?
I could use a break.
Sure. It's 10:36, so we'll come back at 10:45.